A regular meeting of the Town of Florence Planning and Zoning Commission. Ms. Benitez, would you take the role, please?
Yes, Chairman. Commissioner Adam. Commissioner Capollongo.
Here.
Commissioner Pro was absent. Vice Chair Frost.
Present.
Chairman Pranzo.
Present.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Discussion, approval, or disapproval in minutes of regular meetings conducted on July 15th, open up to the commission. There was a lot of minutes.
I want to say I did make the changes that Vice Chair Frost sent earlier this week.
Mr. Chairman, those are just a couple of typos that I'd noticed and alerted Ms. Benitez to. And with that, Mr. Chairman, if you're ready for motion, I will motion approval of July 15th minutes as presented.
I'll second. So we have a motion by Vice Chair Frost, second by Commissioner Capollongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. New business. This is a discussion of possible amendments to the Town of Florence Development Code. How do you want to handle this? Presentation, or one at a time, or?
I think, Mr. Chairman, I have them set up in such a way that we can handle them one at a time.
Okay.
Basically, as you're aware, every once in a while, we find flaws, or contradictions, or just missed, you know, hiccups in the code. So this was just an attempt to clean up a couple of them, since some of these are fairly recent discussions, and other ones seem to be surfacing as more and more, you know, important to what's going on with town business. The first one, as you know, the council recently approved the allowance of medical or recreational marijuana establishments in all commercial zones. And that was fine, that's taken care of. But what we found, just looking through the code later on, that is in the specific written section of 1-5-0.060, under other highway business commercial, that's our most intense commercial zone. Conditional use is still listed, medical marijuana dispensaries as requiring a conditional use permit. So based on that change to the code, we'll be coming back with a public hearing code amendment to erase that and clean that out of the code. So that one's fairly simple. This one has been discussed on a couple occasions by some council members at different times, without specific direction or consensus, but it's come up often enough, we've been asked to bring it forward as a discussion item. Tattoo parlors right now are permitted in the B2 highway commercial, or in either one of the industrial zones. We've had, a couple times now, had inquiries about putting one in a lighter business, or even in the downtown commercial zone. And the few members of council that have mentioned this have no issues with, you know, promoting it downtown, because it does bring in a certain amount of pedestrian traffic, move people through the area. It's more and more socially acceptable. It's an art form, in some cases, and all that. So we were asked to bring that forward, as to allow establishments, tattoo parlor establishments in the B1 and the D to C districts, both. Those are the only two commercial districts that are not allowed, and currently, except for the tourist, we have a tourist retail district in our code, although we have nothing zoned that way, and I'm not sure what would be zoned that way necessarily. So these are the two that we're looking at. I want to just kind of let you know that, at this point, that we'll be setting that up, as far as the public hearing process also. And I don't know if you have any specific concerns, or anything you'd like to offer at this point?
I'll open it up to the commission, please.
Mr. Chairman, Larry, just looking at this, and looking at what we had discussed several months ago about neighborhood businesses, this would almost seem contradictory with the come and go nature of this type of a business, to have it in a neighborhood district, based on what we had described earlier, as an approved neighborhood-type business.
You're talking about the B1 in particular?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Again, we'll process it together, and then you would be able to make whatever recommendation you see fit, that would be moved forward to council, then?
Have you had a chance to look at other municipalities, to see if this is a?
They're all over the map right now, as are in a lot of cases. There's so much in flux, based on the, you know, the change of, just society in general, on things that are acceptable versus not acceptable, and how quickly codes have caught up with some of those changes, as well as certain court cases. This one was not involved with any court case, but that's one we'll be talking about in a little bit, as far as presentation. But yeah, that would be a valid point to bring up during a public hearing process, and for any actions or recommendations you would make, based on your statement, Mr. Vice Chair, we would separate these into two different motions, the D.C. and the B1.
When it comes up, I would be very interested to understand how a tattoo parlor, as I knew him in my day, utilizes the commercial space it occupies. To me, it's kind of like a doctor's office. It's a retail of some kind, but does it really utilize the commercial space?
Valid discussion. I know from the standpoint of licensing and things of that nature, that has improved immensely over the last few decades, as far as safety precautions that have to be taken, and sterilization, and all the things that go with it.
Health department stuff.
They're much cleaner establishments than they were even 25 years ago.
I don't disagree, and body art seems to be in vogue, but I just, if I'm going to bring it into a commercial zone, is it the best use of the commercial space?
And that's, you know, worthy of discussion. Now, we're going to get into a couple of the meteor ones. If you remember the training session you had a couple months back, the discussion of churches and areas that allow assembly, et cetera, et cetera, was raised, and based on some recent court cases, if you allow assembly, in general, theater, anything that has an audience, or something of that nature, then churches rolled into that same definition.
Right.
Right now, our code, the downtown commercial, D.C. district, allows movie theaters outright, indoor movie theaters, but prohibits assembly. So that's contradictory. Now, historically, there has been a theater downtown, it's, right now, it's a vacant lot. And then, in the last year and a half, two years, we've discouraged churches from looking in downtown, because the common feeling was that, you know, for a business facility that was going to be used one day a week, and maybe a couple of evenings, does that really lend itself to the pedestrian retail atmosphere of the downtown zone? So we've been instructed by the town's attorney to be looking at this, and seeing what direction do we want to go within the downtown commercial district?
I already know which direction I want to go. Get rid of the theater.
Pardon me?
Get rid of the theater.
That's, that's the only way that we'd be able to solidify, I guess, overall retail pedestrian use of the downtown, would be to get rid of the theater, and put it in there as assembly within a closed area.
As long as that keeps us inside the definition of public assembly.
Right. And the theater space that we have, that's gone, is not, at this point, because there's no building even to rehab, I would think, you know, gut reaction, that the economic feasibility of building a theater in that small of a space probably isn't going to be there. And now, to convert one of the existing buildings, there's only a couple that are large enough that would really make economic sense to do that, but they're already, in some cases, are being groomed for different retail uses.
Yeah, I don't see having a theater in our distant future, just not between Ruggles and Butte. It ain't going to happen.
Yeah, more likely, we're going to see something out near Merrill Ranch, where the rooftops are.
Most of the public wants that.
And that's a long ways off.
Goes down, and turned into an open market.
Yeah.
What defines theater in terms of size of audience? Because I would reference, we've been using the Suter House for our concerts, and that's open to the public, and I'm thinking about plays, and I'm looking at this beautiful facility, and I just want to make sure, before we outlaw performances, I guess is what I'm talking about.
We're probably going to be looking at occupancy load of the building itself, and that is pretty small.
Right, right, so.
So we'll take that into consideration in our discussions. I'll, we'll brief Mr. Eaton on that, before bringing it forward, so that we have something definitive for you.
But then, even if we did that, that would apply to church congregations, too, right? So let's say you say, no more than 50 people.
Yeah, there's probably going to be some kind of an occupancy cutoff on that.
Interesting. So, and this is only for outside, right, or for inside, I mean?
Inside.
Okay, great.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's nothing, there's no kind of carve-out for arts?
No. No, the church, there's been a recent Supreme Court ruling on that, how they all need to be treated equally. Assembly is assembly, regardless of the end-use.
Okay, baffling, because you sell tickets for arts.
Well, you pay to go to church, when they pass the pass.
That's a donation. That's not a sale.
And for the arts, that is also, can be done through donation. There's no, that doesn't fit into the definition either.
Yeah. Just a little known fact, just to have some fun with this thing. I don't know how many people know it or not, but founding fathers, very much on purpose, made a division between church and state, because they believed that the existence of the church, separate from government, would prevent dictatorship. Something to think about, as we're.
We could turn off the mics and talk about that one for hours. Also, in the highway business commercial, the B2, which is our heaviest commercial, movie theaters permitted outright, but church requires a conditional use permit. So that's one that we either need to change movie theater to requiring a conditional use permit, or we allow churches outright. That's just a fix in that particular section. So it would also be brought forward as a separate action item. This is also a cleanup. We have found out recently that there's a disparity between the Development Code and our Animal Code, Chapter 290, as far as definition of a kennel, how many animals can you keep. And so this one will be coming, and we just, because the Animal Code has been in effect for so long, it does have the higher number, five or more, we're be recommending that you consider sending to the council a recommendation, that we comply with the Chapter 90 for the number of animals that defines a kennel. And that's, runs into a code compliance issue, infrequent, but it's happened since I've been here, several times.
Mr. Chairman, a curiosity question, Larry. There's a lower limit here, is there an upper limit on the amount of animals?
No. No, on a kennel, no, it's, you know, that falls under, the way I understand it, a certain amount of licensing, or something at the county, but I'm not that familiar with it. But no, you can have as many as possible, or as you can fit on your property for dogs, as for a kennel, as far as I understand, but there's certain standards for maintenance and cleanliness, and whatever. You know, we're constantly seeing hoarding, you know, animal hoarding issues popping up in the different locations. But no, there isn't any upper one. Now, on large animals, yes, we do have maximums for large animals, per half-acre basis, as I recall.
Can we, can we put a limit on it? Can we put an upper limit on the dogs?
As far as what is defined as a kennel, yes.
We can, so that may be something.
Basically, when you reach the level that is the definition of a kennel, it cannot be in a residential neighborhood. It has to be in a business zone.
Thank you.
Or certain, certain high-density, or low-density residential, I think we could also, you know, where there's the acre and a quarter lots.
Right.
Things like that, where you have the room. But as far as in your backyard, yeah, there'd be a limit.
Thankfully.
So.
When the police station put in a kennel for, to round up the stray dogs, when they had, we were told in the neighborhood, and I live directly across the street, that they would never be there overnight. And with animal control being stretched so thin, that is no longer true, and so I'm glad to hear this is not in a neighborhood, because it is very disturbing, right, to have these dogs barking all night, and there is no recourse, there's no animal control to come and do anything about it. So I'm happy this is not in a residential area.
Okay, this is one that we've dealt with fairly often, since I've been here. R1-6 is our standard single-family zoning classification, 6,000 square foot lot, single-family home. In the way, we have contradictions in the code, and I'll kind of get into those in detail, but just real quickly, to make sure you understand, that a manufactured home is completely different than a modular home, or is, and obviously different than a site-built home. By definition, a manufactured home is a unit that's manufactured since the magic date of June 15th, 1976. At that point in time, HUD, Housing and Urban Development, established standards for what a manufactured home would be, as far as how they are built. And it has to do with, on a permanent chassis, so that it can be relocated, even after it's been set in place, that the premises, it could be moved, et cetera, et cetera. We do not allow mobile homes any longer in the town, as far as moving in any additional ones. Mobile homes, anything that was built prior to June 15th, 1976, when there were no standards for their construction. A modular home is built to International Construction Code standards, the ICC, even though it might be built in a factory and transported. It also is not transported, built on a permanent chassis. It's a unit that is designed to be put on a permanent foundation and left in place when you're done. So that's built by the, to the same standard that a full-T home is built to, as far as building codes are concerned. So those are the primary differences. Right now, manufactured homes are allowed outright in our least dense areas, the one-acre minimum lot size, or in mobile home subdivisions, or with a conditional use permit in the 10-acre, 4-acre, acre and a quarter, or half-acre minimum lot size areas. Each one of those would allow for a conditional use permit. We don't, staff doesn't have any issue with these, but I just wanted to put that out there, whether or not you think we need to consider changing that for any reason. And then, more importantly, is the R1-6. Right now, you can get a conditional use permit for a manufactured home. In other words, in the few vacant lots that are around the downtown core area, that have the R1-6 zoning, rather than a site-built or a modular home, which we've had both, since I've been here, somebody could still come in and ask for a conditional use permit to allow for a manufactured home. What's interesting is, in the written description of the R1-6, it requires a conditional use permit. In the use tables, it's listed as not permitted. So there's a built-in contradiction in the code, that we'd like to get rid of, and kind of throwing it out there, whether or not you, at this point, have any feelings one way or another, so we know which way to draft it up, so that we bring it forward, you'd have an action item to look at.
If we look at the redevelopment study, that we all worked so hard on, and received an award for, that, to me, left me with a very strong impression that we should be looking to increase our density, particularly in the surrounding area around Main Street. To me, this feels like a use that would limit our density.
The, and that's a good point, keep, yeah, keeping in mind that the redevelopment plan is just a core area that buffers Main Street.
That's what I have in mind.
And they're talking, and there's some areas within that, that multifamily was listed as be beneficial, or something that the town ought to consider. I'm thinking more of, once you get out of that corridor, and get beyond it, as you get like between where the county building is and Highway 79, or from, let's say, Willow Street, further west, where we have still some vacant lots.
I don't disagree that those areas eventually get built out, I just don't want to build in a, build in a problem for the future.
Well, and that's kind of the question, would you want to keep considering manufactured homes, though, in those areas, or would you prefer to go to modular and stick-built? And so that's, if we're trying to upgrade, I guess there could be a.
We have manufactured homes still in this area, surrounding the core, and they're not going away soon. And they do, from material standpoint, they do, they're not up to a standard they need to be, in order to look attractive to new residents. I certainly would not build a house in the lot next to one. So we need to think about that, as we allow it in outside areas, are we building in problems for the future?
Well, that's where the modular home comes in. You can still get a factory-built home, but it's built to the same standard that a new site-built would be.
Yeah, and I don't disagree.
Yeah, and so that's where we think the benefit really would be, is to get rid of the manufactured home allowance completely in those areas, and because what we do get requests, or are seeing some of those disappearing, and a few of them have been built with site-built homes. I'm not, I don't know the exact number, but I think we probably had close to a dozen site-built homes in the downtown core, in the last three years since I've been here, which isn't bad.
No, but it's, it's not bad. I don't disagree. I just, I want the core area, material, the condition of the material, the material condition of the core area, to be a focus, as far as bringing it up. In my personal opinion, the key to Main Street is the surrounding neighborhood.
Correct.
So unless we're creating grant money, and things of that nature, to work on the surrounding neighborhood, the residential, then we're just chasing our tails.
Okay, so this will be a discussion item, then, when we bring it back?
Sure will be.
Okay.
So that, it sounds like that you're leaning towards saying that manufactured homes should be disallowed in R1-6?
Manufactured home is the one with the chassis?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, then I think we're all nodding for the same thing.
Well, I look at, Abby and I lived in Mesa, right on the borderline of Apache Junction, but we were still in Mesa. And Apache Junction went through this growing pain, and they had a hell of a time bringing the material condition of their town up, because they allowed so much of this in. It's something to think about.
No, and actually, I was there during that transition.
Well, there you go.
And that, and we were able to work with a developer on a very upscale modular home development, to the point that they did site-built garages, mission tile roofs, I mean, they did a really upscale project, that you wouldn't be able to do with manufactured homes.
Right, but it brought, excuse me, it brought all kinds of retail in along the trail and whatnot, it worked quite well.
And they took out the dog park, and they put in the, you know, the dog racetrack?
Yes.
And they brought in all the retail. Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I missed, I missed the track. It used to be Friday evening after work, go for hot dogs and beer, and watch the races.
Yeah, Abby and I used to lose money there, yeah.
I would agree, and I think that although we still have a lot of the manufactured homes, as they deteriorate and are removed, it's already getting cleaned up, and looking much better, just by losing those. And so, I agree, I would not want to add more. I think that.
And we'll know how to write this one up. That was it. That's kind of what I was looking for, was to kind of give you a primer of what's going to be coming back. You know, it'll take, you know, a little while to get it written up, and then we'll have to do a community or citizen meeting on it, public hearing notices, all that kind of stuff, because we want, we'll do it under the basis of a public hearing, and finally the commission. Each one will be handled as a different agenda voting item, so it'll look like a big agenda, but now you've been briefed on the types of information that we'll be bringing forward, and the motions, you know, like always, can be discussed, amended during the course of the action you take to move into council.
Personally, I just want our actions to be deliberate, with a single goal in mind, which is to improve the material condition south of the Hill.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Please.
Larry, can we back up?
Sure.
Commissioner Adam made a good comment there, that got my mind to thinking about the kennels and the noise. Is it envisioned that, as you make these changes, that you will have some sort of a, either a noise abatement setback, or some sort of a noise abatement requirement, so that if we have a commercial area that's adjacent to a residential area, there'll be something there that will take care of the potential noise problem?
Let me, I'm going to have to go back now, and I will look where kennels are even permitted. It may be a non-issue.
Okay, very good.
Is this the part where I'm supposed to move on?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. That was great. Okay. Presentation information only. General Plan update. Who gets to do it?
Oh, I've got it. I'm just going to sit down.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, we had a really productive couple of community meetings a few weeks ago. A lot of people turned out. We're getting a number of people online, responding to the questionnaire, and all of that. That information is being compiled. We've given, what's coming out of it is, there seems to be a, one of the three scenarios that were presented at the committee meeting, seems to be coming to the forefront, one of them in particular. And that's good, that makes it easier to focus than the rest of it. We'll be looking at the calendar for any additional community meetings, as well as the hearing dates here over the next few weeks. I anticipate meeting with the consultant next Tuesday, probably. Staff will be at the annual Arizona Planning Association Conference, for a number of reasons. One will be to hopefully recruit for the senior planner position we have had open for almost a year.
No kidding.
And the other will be to meet with the consultant, and maybe, probably learn some stuff. Basically, the State of Arizona, or the state's association, is hosting the Western Region Planners Conference this year. It rotates, I think it's 11 states?
Wow.
That attend these, and we're hosting this year. I've been to them before, in other states, when I've lived in other states, and they're usually a pretty wealth of information, as far as referencing how other states are handling certain issues. So there'll be certain discussion groups, that'll be, you know, hopefully, some work that we can crib, you know, plagiarism saves time. So, we'll be out of the office for a few days next week, our director, Keith Eaton, Mari Sella, and myself, but we'll be meeting with our consultant at that time, too, and we're going to start formulating the next stages of the general plan. Our goal is still to have it in a position that it can go to the electorate in the November 22 election, which has been the goal since day one.
How'd the consultant feel after the public meetings? Did he feel like he was on the right track?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. We had met at staff about a month and a half, maybe two months before, to develop these three scenarios. They had developed the basics of the scenarios, and we kind of, we They had developed the basics of the scenarios, and we kind of, we reviewed them, chopped them up, did things to them. So they brought these scenarios back, along with some other background information at the community meetings. And it was very well-presented and displayed for the public comments that we got. And basically, like I said, what was coming out of it seemed to be a focus on one of the alternatives in particular. And that's a good sign, because people understood it, it made sense to them. The biggest goal that I have on this personally is, having written a lot of general plans and having to administer many more, one of the problems with general plans is they're too specific. And every little property line has to have a designation, and we're trying to get away from that. That's what zoning is for. The general plan is supposed to be general and guide a concept of an area, not a defined individual parcels of an area. So that's what we're working towards. Right now, it would appear, if you look at the general plan, the different land use categories, we have as many of those as we do zoning classifications.
Yes, we do.
Which makes no sense. So we've pretty much cut that in half and have more of what you would consider an evolutionary's type of designations is what we're working on, meaning that a particular area can evolve naturally, just like villages of the old, you know, when we've...
Right.
You know, here or wherever, how things evolve, where you might have some little small retail in the middle of your residential areas, where you can go get your cup of coffee on Sunday morning along with the newspaper and go home, but you don't have to deal with traffic coming out of a supermarket.
Right.
So...
How about the idea of looking at the land north of Merrill Ranch? Did that gain any traction?
Well, that's all part, our planning area goes north of Magma Ranch. So that, the planning area will be reduced by about two miles coming north-south, only because the town of Queen Creek has already annexed property in that area.
Right.
So we can't plan for it anyway. And it also helps us as far as looking at providing services. One of the things people don't realize, and we did do a work session with council a few weeks ago on annexation, is when you annex a chunk of land, you are committing to providing equal services to that land as you have elsewhere within your community.
That's right.
That's an expensive proposition. And so we've reduced the planning area in that area, but to the south, we've actually expanded it, at this point anyway, down around the monastery, so that we can help whenever anything comes through for the county for development out there, that the town has some say-so in guiding how development occurs. And it's still to preserve the low density out there.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the way it's, you know, being put forward right now. But it gives us a little bit more, I don't know, I wouldn't call it power, but, you know, a little bit more participation with the county as any future development out there to help preserve the rural character.
Is there any coordination with the county?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, and they, and they will be involved when we get to the certain point where we have to distribute the draft plan. Before we can adopt it, it has to go out to a 60-day review, to a litany of agencies, including the county, Queen Creek, Coolidge, State Land Department, the BLM, the Military Reservation, the Water Department, ADWR, let's see, a number of state agencies, I don't have the whole list memorized. But it has to go out to a lot of them for input or viability for them to make comments.
Well, south of town is ripe with opportunity with the construction of at least two commercial entities in Coolidge. They're gonna bring people into the area.
Correct.
And so I'd like Florence to be in a position to benefit to some degree.
We expect Coolidge to be, you know, one of our proponents on this, quite frankly, because whatever growth happens here is gonna help them.
Right.
And help their airport, since we don't have one.
Yeah, we talked about it, never got off the ground.
[laughing]
No pun intended.
That was really bad.
Yeah. Okay, well, we all are waiting with bated breath, truly. Moving along, future agenda items. Ms. De Nietes, I saw you roll up your sleeves. This must be good.
As of now, we don't have anything waiting to come to the next meeting. [laughing] But...
But?
Staff is, has currently sent off review comments to the Pinal County for their new defenders building and medical examiner building. We have not received any comments back from them, but as soon as we do, then we'll probably take it forward to commission, further design review.
Okay. Medical examiner's building? The medical examiner needs a whole building?
Yep.
Lot of refrigerator space.
Oh, I forgot about that part. Okay. And that's it, huh?
Can I make a comment about future agenda items? I don't know if that's appropriate. First of all, congratulations on the redevelopment plan. It, I thought the process was terrific. I've never seen so much community engagement and participation, and of course, the plan came together really well. I would like when it's appropriate to hear updates on what's happening. I think it's great that we're getting an award for the plan, but we desperately need action in the redevelopment area, so if something is coming along that would be appropriate to share, I'd love to have that on a...
And there actually has been progress in a couple of areas, so we'll put that on agenda.
Great. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, call to the public. We're not on Zoom anymore, are we?
No, we are not.
Okay, then with no public present, I'll close call to the public. Call to the commission, current events only. Anyone with some good news? Well, I'm going to need staff to help me, because I can't remember the name of the award that we received for the redevelopment.
It was the best redevelopment revitalization plan for the state of Arizona.
And that body of people who made the award, what are they called?
That's the Arizona chapter of the American Planning Association. They have also, in making that award to us this year, have suggested that we submit it to the national award. That application process hasn't started yet. We haven't discussed it in-house yet, whether we will do that or not, because that, you go up against, you know, all 50 states. But we might, we might submit it for that also.
Well, you know, they say the cream floats to the top.
Yeah. What was interesting on this one is, you know, being a small town, we were up against not a lot of competition as far as numbers, but as far as, you know, oomph, we were up against some big hitters, from what I understand. One of them was a five-and-a-half million dollar project.
The airport?
Yeah. That's what I hear now. That's rumor mill, too, so who knows?
Politically, politically end, money-wise.
Mm-hmm.
Well, you guys hit a home run. Thank you.
Even a blind squirrel.
Gets a nut, yeah, I know. Anything else?
Just a couple of questions. I see Circle K as broken ground out at Merrill Ranch Parkway and Hunt Highway, and Big O Tires is going great guns. What's, what's happening with the car wash that we proved earlier?
I believe the, they have submitted for building permits. I believe we just approved their building permit. We are currently, I just saw some plans printed the other day. I think there was some, something that needed to be taken care of.
Tweaks.
Yes, some tweaks.
Great.
But the building permit was applied for, and it was approved.
Great. Just nice to see the new commercial activity happening.
Okay, I'll close call to the commission, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 6:39.
I will second.
So have a motion by Commissioner Adam, second by Commissioner Apalongo. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? We urge...